Forgot to start recording this. Yeah, I mean, you had to do so much. I know you got a lot of help from workers at the town hall. Different departments chipped in personnel. We got through it.
Stepped up and helped out. Dave Putnam let me borrow Arlene and John let me borrow Jess and Sarah and Sandy helped out and Brooke was awesome. And then I had woman Janet who was retired from the Waterford Town clerk's office helping. So it was definitely a team effort. It was great.
Great, great. Do you know roughly how many pieces of mail you had to handle? You and Brooke and your team?
We viewed 5,228 absentee ballots. And we had returned to us there. We delivered to the polls 5,336, but there is about 300 out there still that weren't returned. Some people got them knowing they might not use them, but they were getting them just in case. So that's not too surprising to still have 300 out there.
Erin, Brooke, Wendy, Mary, and all your little elves, all your little workers and helpers. We appreciate what you did for our elections to keep it fair. Keep it, keep it, keep the confidence in the voters that no matter which way they voted, they were, their voices and their votes would count. And I consistently, after every election, after every referendum, get feedback back in my office, I'm sure you do too, about how great our town's elections are. And we, of course, we went to three polling places so the traffic would be better and we could spread people out. That worked out very well this year. So hats off to all of you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. I wanted you to come out tonight. Now you can go to bed. Because you probably need to catch up on your sleep. I know Wendy, you worked, you worked really hard over there. Were you at the community center? Wendy?
Yes, I was at the community center most of the day. I started off a little bit before five. At the high school, helped them start up. And I think I got home at 11, which was super early. So.
Yeah, the only folks that had it tougher probably with the newscasters that that went around the clock a couple of days and they still don't have results. But you guys, great, great work. And listen, it's appreciated by every citizen in this town and a record number of citizens got to vote this time or chose to vote this time, exercised their right to vote this time. And it's all because it was a smooth election. Much appreciated. And I wanted to put that right up in front of our agenda tonight. Squeeze that in because you guys deserve it. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go to bed. See you tomorrow. Thank you all. We'll move on to additional agenda and consent items. Is there any?
No.
Okay, delegations. Would anyone like to speak before the Board of Selectmen this evening on items that may be on our agenda or in general? In order to do that, you gotta raise your hand either electronically or you gotta get my face and do this? Or just unmute yourself and start talking. Ask permission, maybe that'd be the proper way of doing it. Would anyone like to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening? Hey, Roseanne, you can hear me, can't you?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here. I'm getting a little bit of, not feedback, but you know, clicking on your phones and it was lighting up your little box there. So I was very excited that I know you're on. So I just want to confirm with you. Terrific. I'll move on then. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 21st.
This is Kevin Siri and I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 21st, 2020, as submitted.
Mark Salerno, second.
Mark Salerno from a distant cave is seconds the motion. Any comments or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Terrific. The consent calendar, Kevin.
Kevin Siri, to my move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of November 4, 2020, in the amount of $1,415.61.
Second.
Motion is been seconded by Mr. Salerno. Any, any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, we'll move quickly to new business. We have a lot on our agenda tonight, so we'll try to move it along a little bit. Up first is the first selectman's, to authorize the first selectman to execute the historic restoration fund grant. I know that.
I believe we need to approve the consent calendar.
We just did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My computer is acting weird. I apologize.
Sorry, I know you have some computer issues. We're gonna try to fix that this week for you so that you can work remotely as we all are. That's okay. But you got me off my game. So Barbara Low is here and is Chair of the Historic Properties and might want to fill us in. Here's the deal. You all remembered in our budget, we said we were gonna have money put aside for some of these grants as matching funds. And we have a grant ready to go in and you're going to authorize me to submit the grant. And later on, if we get the grant, then I'll be asking you for, to release those funds for the matching part of it. But right now it's just an authorization to execute a grant and the town's government, the town's body needs to authorize said grant. Gary Gashill's here as well. Do you need to chip in Barbara, Gary? Give us a one-minute synopsis of what we're looking at tonight?
Sure, I'll leave it to Barbara to start. If you have technical questions, I'll be happy to answer.
That's a good move.
First, I want to thank, I'd like to thank City Planner, Town Planner Gary Gashill and Ben Bullock and his entire staff at the Friends of the Samuel Smith Farmstead for their efforts in putting this grant together. Anybody that's ever put together a grant knows that it's a team effort and it's not a lot of fun, but the reward is definitely worth it. This, as last year, the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen graciously set aside $10,000 as a match for any grant that we were able to, to earn. And if we're lucky, this will pass. And as Mark said, it will then release the funds and we'll be able to go forward with our project.
And I just also point out that Ben Bullock is here. Sorry, Ben, I didn't formally introduce you. You've done a lot of work on this as well. Sometimes the Brady Bunch boxes get so big that I don't see everybody when I'm supposed to see him at the right time because I'm busy yapping. But Ben, thank you for all the work you've done on this as well. And Gary did the, you know, the brunt of the heavy lifting here. We're gonna get it, the grant submitted, and that's why we're asking for your authorization tonight. Anything we need to, again, this is a, this is more of a clerical approval tonight. When we get into that matching grant part, we're gonna want to come back and talk about what you're actually doing with those funds. The exciting project of redoing that roof and fixing the bow in it and, you know, shoring up that house to last for generations. Am I right? Am I good? Okay, that all said, Kevin, is there a motion?
Yes, there is. Resolve, this Kevin Siri, resolve that Mark C. Nickerson, who is the first selectman of the town of East Line, is empowered to execute and deliver in an aim, and on behalf of the town of East Line, a certain contract with the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to affix a corporate seal, if any.
I'm happy to second it.
You're a good man, Mr. Cunningham. Thank you. We have a motion. It's been seconded. This is an exciting project. We got behind the historic properties last year in our budget. We said, you know what, these funds, these grants need matching funds. It's the only way this, this whole world works right now in that, in that arena. And we're gonna get it done. So I'm hopeful that we get this grant money and we can, we can move forward. Any other comments?
Mark, I just would add that I did hear back from the shipboat today. That's the State Historic Preservation Office. They will be having a meeting coming up in December, so if we can get this out our door, get on their December agenda and hopefully get awarded by January.
That'd be great. Let's get moving on it. That's great. I'll call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Is there any abstentions? Are there any abstentions? Okay, thank you. So it's a unanimous vote. Again, the three of you, thank you so much for moving this along. We'll see you hopefully maybe back in our January meeting to start talking about some matching funds and getting that money out into an account where Anna can cut, cut some checks so we can go fix a roof. That'd be great. Thank you again.
Thank you all.
To be on our agenda is the authorization, to authorize the submission of the Municipal COVID Relief Fund Program reimbursement. So as you know, there's government money out there for COVID expenses. It's a complicated world. The state has some money, FEMA has some money. There's some other monies out there in grant forms and we're pulling that together. Anna is gonna give us some detail on that.
Good evening. So with regards to the state coronavirus relief fund, there is a requirement that it actually be in your legislative minutes that the Finance Director of the town is authorized to submit the grant applications. And so that's why this is coming before you. The first that we did make was for $36,795. The surprisingly, $11,578 of that amount was for legal fees, both for our Corporation Council and for our Labor Council. Corporation Council relative to reviewing the executive orders and assisting us with the right procedures to go about our Zoom meetings and on the labor side, just dealing with the laws and how to handle different situations that we've had to deal with, with, with our employees. We spent about a little over $7,500 on computer equipment so that our employees had the ability to work remotely. And then we spent a little over $6,000 on what's classified as office modifications, getting all of the shields up. So that was the first submission. To date, this fiscal year, we've spent about $8,900 on COVID-related expenses, which will be submitted at a later date. And we have just under $20,000 to submit to the FEMA program. And that's primarily overtime shifts that both of our fire departments had to put on in order to deal with the various transports and then some cleaning and disinfecting. So the total that I made is $65,644 that, you know, will submit to the various programs. This excludes funding that we have already received from the state to assist with the elections. And then there's a little over $2,000 that we are not going to be able to submit. It's for a couple of employees that actually worked extra hours other than their normal work week. However, because we didn't actually pay them, they accrued comp time. We're not, you know, eligible to submit though. So that, that's just a few highlights of, you know, what we have in terms of submitting for reimbursement.
Are there any questions for Anna? I have, go ahead.
I was just gonna, as Kevin said, I was gonna move to authorize the Director of Finance to be the Town of East Line's agent for applications for reimbursement submitted to and to be submitted for the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management Municipal CRF Coronavirus Coronavirus Relief Fund Program. In addition to authorize the Director of Finance to be the Town of East Line's agent for applications for reimbursement to be submitted to FEMA for the coronavirus, COVID-19 pandemic, Eligible Emergency Protective Measures Public Assistance Program.
Mark Salerno, second.
Mark Salerno, seconds. We have a motion that's been seconded. My question was going to be, Anna, do forecast additional funding needs going forward, assuming we maintain this for the next six months?
Well, I mean, as departments, we set up a code in our software system so that as departments place orders, if they are, they all know that if they are placing orders that's related to getting extra supplies or materials relative to the pandemic that they coded this way. So in the event that funding is available, we, we have everything all set to make submissions.
I don't, I don't perceive we'll have, I guess it will have a lot more. I mean, we bought all the physical items, the sneeze shields, a lot of the PPE, et cetera. We've gone through the, the legal expenses, which was significant. We had to figure out what to do with, you know, 100-plus employees. What happens if kind of situation. So I think a majority of our expenses have been realized. That's the town side. The school side is totally separate and they're dealing with their piece of it. And I think some of that will come back to us for appropriations in the future as they are running significantly in the red. Ours is, is, is very small compared to their, their overages, but they're totally different needs. So are there any other questions? Again, going after reimbursement for COVID relief fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Terrific. Chief and, and the two lieutenants are here. I welcome you. We are, we know the body camera item was coming to us because you gave us a great rundown of the police accountability bill and its possible expenses and requirements and mandates coming at us. And we knew that this was coming at us rather quickly. Thank you for pulling it together. Chief, I'll give you the floor and, and let us know what your request is.
Thank you. So, you know, as we talked about two weeks ago, the police accountability bill has a section or a portion of it related to the requirement of having, having body worn cameras. That system and the systems involved in that have, is something that myself and the two lieutenants have been researching. We've gotten to the point where we, I believe, are able to narrow down the vendor of our choice and negotiated a package with, with that vendor, which the Board of Police Commissioners has endorsed to bring forward to you as, as a body tonight. Understanding how that process works, we basically met with three different vendors, three vendors that are really the top of the line providing body cameras and in-car cameras to the State of Connecticut. That was Axon, which is Taser International, Panasonic, which is the arbitrator system, and WatchGuard Video. The three of them are our companies that we all had in, all did present or watched presentations of their product, saw in the real world what their products could do. We also have, have discussed this with all of our surrounding agencies. I'm a very big fan of saying we don't want to reinvent the wheel. And at the same time, that we're not the only department that's out there looking to expand their program from in-car cameras to body cameras and vice versa in some cases. So, you know, we have discussed this at length with our partners and other agencies. Overwhelmingly, the departments that are moving to it have, have all been on the same page with really identifying that Axon was the leading manufacturer and the leading product for many, many reasons. And something I'll explain to you is, these are not apples to apples. Every product in the body worn camera and in-car camera venue all offer vastly different products with, which have vastly different options. What we were looking at is what provides the Town of East Line, its officers, its citizens, the best product for really what we're trying to accomplish, not just trying to accommodate and basically work with that law, but also to say, really, what is there that is gonna help us do our jobs and do it more effectively? I am a big proponent of body worn cameras. I think the experience that law enforcement has had since moving to body worn cameras has been overwhelmingly positive. It only benefits us in our investigations and it benefits us with the ability to really investigate complaints against officers, even though we have extremely low amounts in our community. It still helps us. It helps us really kind of interact and see how our officers interacting with our public. But it also helps with our investigation. So that being said, we've identified Axon as, as the vendor that we believe gives that best product. Your package tonight has the three quotes from the three different vendors. You'll see that they're vastly different. But again, I want to point out to you, they are not apples to apples. They all offer a very, very distinctly different product. For Axon, I'll talk a little bit about that. That is also the company that makes the Taser, which, which we in all other departments have. Axon right now is in the process of being implemented in the city of New London. It is in the city, Texas McTalagron has had their body worn cameras for three years. Graton is adding the in-car camera component to that. The city of Graton and then the town of Stonington are all working towards implementing the same way that we are under this program. Right now, the proposal that we have and which you have in front of you really is, is a unique type of program for, for body worn cameras. What it will do is, in our 14 Mark Patrol Cars, will, and this is that package we have, will put in, in-car cameras into those, those vehicles, which are top of the line, new cameras. And also give our 25 officers all body worn cameras, including at no cost to us to spare cameras to work with this system. But what Axon offers that the other companies do not offer is replacement programs. So basically, if we went with the other vendors, we buy the cameras, we expend our money, and we own those cameras. Any replacement that has to happen with those is on us. We all know technology changes. Technology evolves, but also it's computerized. So they're apt to have failures, to have damage because they're out in the field. The Axon program has a two-and-a-half-year replacement and a five-year replacement. So under this program, our body worn cameras, if we go with Axon, are, when we purchase them, we get all new cameras. At two-and-a-half years, they replace all of that hardware for the body worn systems and give you new cameras. At the five-year mark, they replace again all of your body worn cameras, including all of your in-car cameras. All of that obviously is a great savings to the town long-term, looking at the long-term viability of this program. But also on the car side, because right now, what we do when we purchase a vehicle, the, the system that we have in our cars right now is an older system under Panasonic. Those cameras are old. What we have done is when we purchased new cars, we purchased a new system inside of each car. So buying two cars a year, that's really running us about $14,000 per year. So after a five-year period, if you extrapolate that out, it's over $70,000 that we're expending for those cameras. Moving into the Axon system, we will not have to do that any longer because we'll have brand-new cameras put into the vehicles. They'll be under five years old, be able to rotate those through as cars are replaced. At the five-year mark, again, we get all new cameras. So that's again, you know, we all know technology, technology changes and evolves. This system with the body worn cameras especially, at the two-and-a-half-year mark, if they've come out with a brand-new camera and brand-new system, that's what we get in the same thing at the five-year mark. So that is a win-win because totally in this system, we end up with 75 body worn cameras and 28 in-car cameras for the price that we're, we're gonna be paying. So again, you have, you have that, that cost savings. At the same time, we're provided with unlimited cloud storage, which is an enormous piece here. The other vendors are offering server storage to us. And the servers, we all know, technologically require upkeep. They require maintenance. They are prone to have failures to extend the memory in, inside of those, those units. But also, you really have to work through things with limitations. The unlimited cloud storage is a huge selling factor in this. In talking to other agencies, that is one thing that they all identified as probably the best piece of what they're doing with this program. It also gives us evidence.com for each officer. And what that allows them to do is any evidence that they get that's visual, that is audio, video, print, we're able to upload and put into the case file with all of that other evidence. So I'll give you kind of a conceivable type of situation where you have a drunk driving accident, so to speak. You may have video from the body worn cameras, the car cameras. You may have surveillance video from a store that it happened in front of. You may have cell phone video that someone provides to you. All of that can be given and put up into the same part of that evidence.com. So it is classified and categorized as that accident, so to speak. So now it's easy because all our evidence is there. We don't have to worry about that server maintenance. We don't have to worry about maintaining those servers, backing them up. It's all there to be available. It also gives us the opportunity to provide a link to the state's attorney's office or to defense attorneys that they then can just log in. So what that does is eliminates our need from a personnel standpoint to have people having to make copies of all of that for the records. It significantly makes their job easier. Now, we still have to redact. We still have to have that portion, but there's also easy redaction software. So we're trying to make this as seamless as possible. Give us the most modernized, best product for our officers for investigations, but also allow us to use the technology available to really work with the outside agencies, again, being state's attorney's office, defense attorneys, insurance companies, and so on, so forth. So that's an enormous benefit too, because that server storage right now is costly. We have to have that upkeep there. So really, you know, I think Axon in and of itself gives us an enormous product that gives us great quality for the people that are experiencing it. And Mark, I don't know, are you able to do the screen share so I can show that video? Again, you're muted.
I am. Same program we had last night. So you should be able to jump right on there as, as, oops. I have to get out of this. Sorry, before you get in. Okay, I think you should be able to do it, sir.
Actually. So what this is, is we, we have gone to Axon and they provided us with a camera to utilize as a demonstration. So going to a simple type of call, I just wanted to give you an idea of what that looks like and what that camera view and what the opportunities are. So give me a second to kind of push through this. For some reason, it's not.
This is how it started last night, too.
You know, it's me. It's clunky. Because it wasn't with the screen share, it wasn't allowing that. Okay, here we go. Now, the noise in the background is a fire alarm, so you'll, you'll hear that once, once we're out of the vehicle. But just to give you the idea, the clarity of the camera system.
Sounds like bagpipes. Someone who isn't very good at bagpipes, bagpipes.
Yeah, you're right, it does. But so basically, I just wanted to be able to show you what that quality of video looks like and, and really, you know, what the stabilization looks like on, on that camera, what the clarity of what you're looking at and the movements, because I think that's important. The other pieces that, that work with Axon is the synchronization. So any camera that is 30 feet from the other cameras, once one is activated, they all activate. So that's important too, especially in stressful situations where you have multiple officers, you're getting multiple angles. Whether the officer starts their camera or not, they understand that they're in proximity to another camera, so they all start each other. So, you know, we can go on and on. There's a tremendous amount of value in this product. You know, when looking at all three, it was clear, clearly above, and I think both lieutenants can attest to the same thing. Clear, clearly above, and also I think economically, long-term with the replacement plan with the storage, a, a home run as far as the value for the community moving forward. So I think that, that in and of itself is, is a benefit to us. So financially, where, where does this stand? So if you look at the, the quote that is provided to us, we're able to negotiate a little bit of a discount with them because of the time of year and trying to be competitive with, with other agencies as well as other vendors. So what I had them do was provide a quote that in the first year, because So what I had them do was provide a quote that in the first year, because of the state statute for thirty percent reimbursement, and that thirty percent reimbursement is for the body worn camera systems and the related items that, that are part of that. So that first year is a hu- is at a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, because that is the, the portion that is eligible for that thirty percent reimbursement. So that thirty percent reimbursement brings it down to about a hundred and six thousand dollars, which the town would be responsible for. Understanding the town has to, the way the state grant goes, the town have to pay the full amount, get the system implemented, and then apply to OPM for that reimbursement. In this plan, there's, it's a five-year plan. So each year after that, the town will be responsible for paying thirty-one thousand dollars. That is for the storage fee, the licensing fee, but also spreading out the five years of those in-car camera installations. At the end of the five years, we then have the option to continue with the program or renegotiate it with them, not having to purchase the bulk's hardware from the beginning, but also kind of the lower rates to, to extend this. Or we can decide this is not what we want to do and move on from that. So again, I think far above the other products, I think this is definitely the way that the town of East Lime should go for our police department. And it puts us, you know, ahead of the game technologically and allows our officers to get out there and, and have the best technology possible. Any questions?
Very thorough, and I'm sure there are some questions. Chief, you mentioned at the five-year mark, we decide whether we want to continue with them or not. But at the five-year mark, they're also changing out all our car cameras. So tell me about that relationship. They change out our cameras, then we say we don't want to do business with them, or?
Well, so, so really, at that five-year mark, we would be getting all new items. So right, I think in theory, we really wouldn't want to step away at that point. We would want to maintain that relationship.
But that's the hook.
But certainly, you know, we wouldn't necessarily have to go into a five-year plan. We can go a year-to-year plan. That piece at that point, once we have the technology, would be for the storage. Maintaining that storage, no matter what, if we walk away, whatever is up on that cloud remains ours. We don't lose access to those items once they're up there. So that's an important piece too, because that legacy of that data maintains with us no matter which direction we end up going.
Chief, I, I don't know that you brought it. I didn't hear you bring it up. This, this, this proposal of Axon was endorsed by the Police Commission last night. At their commission. I think that's important. We're, we're all figuring out the relationship that the Board of Selectmen has with the Police Commission. And, and I know the police forces figuring that out to the Police Commission. Every time they do something, it's, it's, they're doing it for the first time. And so we thought it was appropriate that the Police Commission look over these proposals and endorse a particular event, product. And so that's coming tonight from the Police Commission as well. I think it's important to highlight that. Other, there are the, any other questions from the Board of Selectmen?
Question, Mike. So if we go with Axon, and I think you just said, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. And we decided to switch in five years. Does the evidence that's been stored on the cloud, we have access to that forever?
So i- in, in, forever, that maintain is ours. But we have, we have access to that no matter what. We do not lose that.
Without a fee?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
I have a question. So on, on their quote, so you have that first year payment of the hundred and fifty-one thousand and change. And then in the subsequent years, are those subsequent year charges, are they just an amortization of buying the, the hardware upfront and then just stretching those payments out? Or are those maintenance amounts for the, the software and cloud storage?
So it's a combination, Dan. What, because of the way the wording of the Police Accountability Bill is, the thirty percent reimbursement is only for body worn cameras, not in-car cameras. So what I asked Axon to do is front-load that first year with everything that is related to body worn cameras, so we can maximize our ability to get reimbursement from the state. And then after that, each subsequent year is for the combination of the storage access, the licensing fees, and then taking the amortization of those, of the in-car camera systems and spreading that over the four years. That first year has nothing, has no payment for in-car cameras, because I wanted to be able to kind of keep that separate, so we can maximize the reimbursement.
Got it. All right. Smart. And then if we wanted to extend that contract at the five-year point, then we can renegotiate with them, and it might be another yearly fee to keep with the same system.
Absolutely. No matter what, there's going to end up being a yearly fee for the cloud storage. So that in and of itself, we know is going to be there no matter what. Certainly, you know, we're going to be in the same situation. If you look at the state of Connecticut especially, huge amount of departments that are moving into these systems, we're going to be, you know, in a very good spot. Or because negotiating, negotiation-wise, all of us in southeastern Connecticut and Connecticut in general will be going to these companies to renegotiate. They're going to have a huge cliff to drop off, in my, this is my opinion, if they don't really kind of maintain what they're having us pay, because it's in their best business interest to continue that relationship.
So you have an event, whatever, and other evidence, cell phone data from someone else that happened to be there, and that can all be stored in that same location in that database so that if there's a subpoena or you're responding to a request, it would all be in the same spot.
Absolutely. So, so what, and that's a great question, Dan. What it allows us to do is take all of that evidence. And, you know, from talking to Groton Town, they're even scanning documents and putting them up into that cloud with that evidence. So they really create a folder just for that one case. And I think that's a crucial piece of it, because right now, we have one server for our in-car cameras. We have one server for all of our case files and records management. And then we have another server, which is dedicated to, you know, the other files that exist, and, and they're all segmented. Putting this together, it reduces our need for some of the other servers. And again, we still need the servers, but the drain on them is far less. And it makes it so much easier to keep all of this stuff together for organizational standpoint, records management. But again, that access to, you know, yourself as an attorney, I could send you a link and you have that entire file from that case right in front of you, where you don't have to get copies of CDs or thumb drives. You click, click through everything and you can have access.
So it integrates it all into one spot?
It does. Yes.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I note that this company is headquartered in Arizona. We also looked at another company, Tel Repco. Is that how it's pronounced?
Yes.
Which is, yeah, which is a Connecticut-based company. So what do you, what was the major difference that you found between the two companies that made you feel more strongly about the Axon?
Certainly. Well, it, it's, it's quality of products, Roseanne. Tel Repco is actually a vendor for the Panasonic system. So while Tel Repco is located within Connecticut, they're simply the vendor for that Panasonic arbitrator system. That is a, that's a system that we have had here in East Line for probably ten to fifteen years. The state police have it, and, and they're currently examining that relationship. The technology that exists with that unfortunately has not kept up with where Axon, for example, has gone. It's lagged behind. We have a lot of difficulties with our in-car system as we speak, which really kind of precipitated us saying, we need to look somewhere else, because having Panasonic in-house right now, it just does not work well for us. And, and, and we're not alone with that, because there's very few departments. Again, I think state police is really the only major department in the state of Connecticut that still utilizes it. Anybody who has in the past has seemingly moved away from it. So I understand the question, and again, Tel Repco is the vendor, but they're not the, I'm sorry, they are the conduit to the vendor. They're the retailer, but they're not the, the manufacturer.
Thank you for the clarification. So now, this Axon is corporate, has its corporate headquarters in Arizona. Do they have in-Connecticut offices?
No, but what, they, they do not. But I do understand from everybody that utilizes them right now that their tech support is phenomenal, that they are immediately responsive to anything. They immediately ship out and replace. So if we were to have a body camera that just is not uploading correctly, is not working correctly, one of the lieutenants enters into the system that there's a trouble ticket, they will immediately send out a new one and ask for you to send the old one back to them. They're installers. They have contracts with installers to come in, put these systems in. They fly people out to do the training when you put the system together. And again, that's a question that I ask, because that is, that, you know, obviously is something I want to be aware of. But every department that has utilized them has nothing but rave reviews that they've told us with their relationship with them and the responsiveness that they have.
So there are other Connecticut towns that have already committed to use, utilize their services?
And just southeastern Connecticut alone, the Groton Town Police Department has had the body cameras for three years. New London just finished the implementation and training for their system. The city of Groton is moving to it. Stonington is moving to it. So, you know, we are in good company in southeastern Connecticut alone with, with the people using that. I will also tell you that if you look around the Hartford area, you see any videos that may be on the news, I think almost exclusively, you see the little Axon symbol in the camera footage that they're showing on the news, because that many departments around that area of our state are utilizing them as well.
Okay. Now, under this proposal, every officer would have their own individual camera.
That's correct, because the, the Police Accountability Bill mandates that any activities that officers engage in, that is engaging with the public, they have to have that video. So for us, for example, Celebrates Lime in and of itself requires us to have every officer have one, because if we have an event where we have everybody deployed and out there, I have to be able to have a camera for them. Also, in conversation with other departments, it's just not even, you know, a, a question that you're going to share those cameras. Simply from the standpoint of keeping them charged, downloading the video. You know, you can't just hand them off from officer to officer, because they do have to spend at least a little bit of time in the charging cradle, you know, to, to download the video, but also to charge back up and be ready to go.
So an officer comes on duty, goes to his or her own locker, picks up their own camera, which has been on a charging station from the time they left their, their shift until they come to their next shift. And every officer has their own individual secured, unique locker.
No, that's not. So, so these, these come into, you, you'll see in the, in the quote, there are eight bay charging stations, because that's also a docking station. So in the squad room of the police department, and, and this is universal around other departments too, those are mounted, they're, they're networked into your computer network that has that, that, that goes up to the cloud. They're charging and downloading systems. So they are identified computer-wise as that officer's body camera. It's identified on it. It automatically, when you put it into the cradle, immediately starts downloading up into that cloud system. And, and then there's also secure pieces of this where the, only the officer who has that video has access into that video. So not every officer can grab that camera, look at the video that's on it, or do anything with it. It's exclusive to that officer, because it is registered to them. We as supervisors, myself and two lieutenants certainly have access into those for case files. But that's about the extent of it. Not everybody can get into it. So there's a secure function for the video. However, they are all together in those charging banks, because that's just the most efficient way, especially because they have to be hardwired in to computer network.
So now, we're getting the twenty-five cameras that covers the officers. Is there a need for you to have one as a chief?
I, I, I'm the twenty, twenty-five, including myself.
Okay. And how about the, does that include the detective positions as well?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you very much.
Good questions. Paul, I think you tried to jump in.
Yeah. So chief, going through the estimate, I understand the one fifty-one upfront, there's four subsequent layers that years at thirty-one, almost thirty-two thousand. That basically is covering the car cameras?
It, it's a combination, Paul. It is the, it's the cloud storage, it's the licensing fees, as well as taking that in-car system and spreading that out over the four years. So it's a combination of all of those factors.
So the payment upfront in year one for the cloud storage is a hundred and thirty-three thousand. That's plus this, some additional cost each year after that for the storage?
You got the right page you're at.
Right on the first page. Now, the cameras are seventeen-five with some auxiliaries.
Well, yeah, so, so the, the tap payment is, is they're bundling everything together. I think their explanation of that goes on later, where, where they're bundling all of that stuff together into the system. So let me just take a look at that.
Those are the licensing fees. You got twenty-five.
A combination of everything, because it's, it's the access into the, the licensing for each officer. I'm just trying to think, see if they have, if I have the document in front of me, which has the definition of their tap, their tap payment, but. I'm thinking, well, if you're looking at the, it's a thousand dollars per officer, so the twenty-five, if you look at that breakdown under other on that first page.
Yeah.
So it's the unit price of a thousand per month. Okay, so it's a five thousand dollars per officer for that first year. So I think they're front-loading your evidence.com, and then you're just maintaining that. So it's the access into that system for those officers for the body camera use.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then of course, if someday we, we add personnel to your organization, we'll have to be, you know.
Right. So we discussed that the Police Commission, where, you know, that's part of simply, or very much like we do with uniforms, for example. When we put in, let's say we are going to add an officer. We factor in their radio, their uniform, and this would have to be in that factor to say, what is the licensing fee to increase one officer? Not just the body camera, but also now that five thousand dollar fee, as you see there, for that officer to get into that evidence.com. So certainly, it's a, it's a, it's a fee that we know we have to capture.
You know, it certainly looks like you did, and of course, Police Commission did as well, as long as your lieutenants did a very good job of getting a system that gives you the most flexibility and, and a high quality. So I appreciate the explanation and answering folks' question and providing the three estimates, so.
And one thing I just want to point out to you is, you know, Lieutenant Dzerzky and myself, yesterday, just making that video clip that we presented to you. Under the Panasonic system, in the in-car cameras, it's cumbersome to even get that video, do anything with it. We literally, within a minute, minute and a half, had that video off the camera, segmented, edited down in time, because there's pre and post-event stuff there, and had it emailed and ready to go, you know, for a presentation. That, that took less than two minutes. Where in the Panasonic system, unfortunately, we have some videos that really will take six, seven hours just to video, to download from that system without the ability to redact. So there's, again, I can't speak enough for, for how easy this is to navigate, and I think how beneficial it's going to be to us in, in the long term.
Thank you.
If I have just a couple more questions, if you don't mind. So bottom line, hundred and fifty-one upfront, thirty-two, about thirty-two K a year after that, you would expect after five years, we would be able to continue at about that, right?
Yes, you know, from the conversation, from the conversation with the, the, the sales representative, and understanding he's a sales rep, you know, he estimates that, yes, we would, we wouldn't have to have any hardware costs. It simply would be a continuation of that plan that we're having. But he, he couldn't commit to saying, yes, five years from now, Axon's gonna, you know, promise you that, that fee. But there's no hardware cost upfront, which is that big first piece that we're paying for.
Okay. I assume, you, you mentioned that they'll fly someone up for training, so I assume training's included?
Yes, it is. Yep.
And so we talked a lot last year about IT needs and, and issues that we had and need for personnel. Is this, this seems like something that will make it a little bit less burdensome?
I, I think one of my fears, we already have an IT burden in this town. We are, we are already in a place where it's difficult to manage IT. My big concern when we started saying that we needed to move to a body worn camera system, knowing how cumbersome the in-car system is, was trying to make sure that we could find a system that had as little impact as possible on the IT needs of the town. And I think this really accomplishes that using that cloud storage. All we have to ensure really is that connectivity inside of those devices. And the in-car cameras right now, star computer comes out if we have a problem, that, that just is the way it is. It would maintain with these. But the body worn cameras, with the ability to have them shipped back to the company and replaced if there's any problems at all, IT would not have to worry about figuring out what's wrong and why this camera's not working, not transmitting. They don't have to worry about why the iCloud was having a problem. They don't have to worry about why the iCloud was having a problem. All they have to do is maintain our connectivity to that network. So again, I think we've tried very hard to identify a solution that was best for the town, but also for the IT needs is going to be the the less stress and impact on the system we have.
Excellent. That that sounds that sounds great. Last question, the existing in-car cameras. What's the plan to those? Are those worth any money that we could resell?
Certainly can. We certainly can examine that. I don't think there's going to be much value, simply because there's not many departments that are utilizing those, and some are old. One thing that we can do is, like, right now, we have a one vehicle that's ordered, you know, for this year. We're purchasing the camera for that. But we can now eliminate that purchase of the camera off of that, because, well, we're not going to replace that. Sorry, Lieutenant Mason did an outstanding job when we changed for the resident trooper system of finding, you know, avenues to sell some of those old state police radios. We certainly could look for avenues to say, you know, we have these Panasonic cameras that are brand new, two years old, three years old, whatever. To see if there is is a, you know, an option for that. I think both of us or all of us are of that mindset that we don't want it sitting around the building. If we can get even a couple of dollars for it, we're going to try to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Dagle.
Very. Chief, very reputable company used by a lot of folks. I'm assuming that their security for their cloud storage is second to none.
And we we currently utilize that storage for our tasers. So the taser downloads go on to that same platform. So they have utilized this for years and years. So, you know, our understanding, and we've definitely vetted this out, and it's utilized. Across governments all throughout this country and has not had any any issues. So, you know, that's always a concern. I think when we looked at these three years ago, we started to look at like a cloud versus service storage. I think, you know, it really has identified as as being very secure and not a issue. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll move a resolution, Kevin Serry. Whereas the Board of Selectment has determined that a true and very real need exists. For the acquisition of body cameras for the police department as recommended by the police commission. Be it resolved to approve an appropriation in the amount of 279,549 and 32 cents for the purpose of purchasing body camera equipment. More particularly described in the five-year quote summary prepared by Axon Enterprise Incorporated. The acquisition of said equipment for purchase for a total price of 279,549 and 32 cents. To be payable in the annual installments as follows over a period of five years. Year one, 151,601 and 8 cents. Years two through five, 31,987 and 6 cents each. The first selectmen is authorized in the name and on behalf of the town to execute and deliver any documents that may be required in connection with said transactions. Whereas the state of Connecticut has stated that there will be grant funds in the amount of 30% reimbursement for said body camera purchases. The 30% reimbursement will be based upon the year one amount of 151,601 and 8 cents. Estimated to be 45,480 and 32 cents. When grant funds are received, they are to be deposited to the general fund. The first selectman or his designated is authorized in the name and on behalf of the town to execute and deliver. Any documents that may be required in connection with the grant application and reimbursement. Whereas the town maintains a contingency account in the general fund, which has enough resources available to make. To make the year one payment in the amount of 151,601 and 8 cents. Therefore, move to transfer 151,601 and 8 cents from account 01 dash 01 dash 120 dash 200 dash 500 contingency. To an account to be established titled PS Police Body Cam. Upon adoption by the Board of Selectment, this resolution is to be forwarded to the Board of Finance for approval. The resolution is passed under the guidelines of Executive Order 7S, with no town meeting and being less than 1% of the current budget.
Heard Mark Salerno's voice as a second. Any further comments? You know, we didn't talk about the fact that this is law now, that we're required to get this. But and and we're not going away from this, we're going toward this. No matter where we are on the spectrum of policing in America, no matter where anybody sits on that spectrum. Body cameras are good for everybody, for the police officers and for the public. And we should get the best. We seem to be getting the best. We should be getting a proper. Equipment that is easily usable, but will give us the best quality as well. And that we can feel confident that our officers are going out and this this equipment's going to work. And we've not not always had that with the the car cameras that we've had. I'm glad that we can move this forward, and we'll go to the Board of Finance next week for final approval. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? It's unanimous vote. I, you know, I, before I let you all go, you know, we've. Congratulations, Chief. Great job on the presentation and your assistants, your assistants who are lieutenants now. And that was going to be my point. We've gotten really good at now that we have a police force, independent police force. We were getting really good at bringing new officers into Board of Selectment meetings and making announcements and introductions and welcoming. Folks, and also when it came to. Promotions. And I don't know that we formally have introduced Lieutenant Mike Mason and Lieutenant Dana. Oh, my God, Dana, what's your last name? Oh, my God, Dana, Dana. Thank you, Jezerski. You have to write your name down. I'll forget. I apologize. Holy cow. Congratulations to you both for your promotion that made you lieutenants, which is a significant. Upgrade to our police force and in our supervision. And you two are both fine individuals who will serve us well. And have served us well in the past. So I'm not sure that we made that announcement here at the Board of Selectment level at any point in time. I want to make sure that I acknowledge it here at a Board of Selectment meeting.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Jezerski. And Mike. Congratulations to you both. And we are, we've come such a long way in a short period of time and all under the direction of Chief Finkelstein. And I I I'm amazed every time I have interaction with you folks that the level of professionalism. And how you serve our community and continue continued success to you all. Okay, great. And thank you again. Next on our agenda is 2D, the discussion of possible action of the firefighter administrator position. We I've had several discussions. First of all, there's several firefighters here tonight. And I thank you all for coming along as witnessing the discussion we'll have this evening. We had a discussion in executive session at our last meeting about personnel issues, about the needs for. Having more supervision. We have nine full-time firefighters. We have. A dozen or two dozen part-time firefighters who are actual town employees. Yet they don't really have a boss in the firehouse. They have chiefs who are elected as volunteers by the by the volunteer corps. And I think we've grown as a. As not only in the police department, but in the fire departments in this day and age of. Credibility, of responsibility, of accountability, that we need to have a person stationed. Within the fire departments who would be responsible for these employees. Our relationship with the unions, with the substantial funding that we provide to the fire departments every year. That would someone who would be accountable for that. And our chiefs, we've have a, we have a long history of outstanding volunteer chiefs. But at the end of the day, they don't work for me. They work for their volunteer department. And that's a. It's a gray area. That's a fine detail that I don't think many of us understand. And I'm going, I've tried to relay that relationship out to you folks. This would be, I'm suggesting a temporary position be established as a firefighter administrator. It's a, it wouldn't be a full-time salary position. It's more of a part-time, three-quarter time position as needed. You have been forwarded, the job description is rather detailed. I must admit that Bill Ricks, who's here tonight authored it. I think I may have tweaked a line or two, or maybe not even you, the version you see. Bill did a great amount of work on doing some background. Background work on researching this and is in in kind of putting some thought and lots of discussions with myself and. The former chief of the Flanders Fire Department, Chief Ricks. About this position and the need for it. There are several things that we talked about last week in executive session. No need to bring it up now. But I I do feel like I established to you folks the need to put this person on. We would start in this initial go around on January 1st. The position and the hiring agreement would be as needed. It would be understood that more than likely, it would be a temporary position lasting. Anywhere from six months to 18 months or maybe longer. As we are also, the next item on our agenda, we'll be establishing a subcommittee to of the organization, the fire department organization. And I think it was Kevin and, well, we'll get to that when we get to that on the agenda. So we were, we're going to do a total review of the fire department, the relationship with the volunteers, the part-time, the full-time. The ambulance association, the facilities, and frankly, their their requirements, their needs. And making sure we're supporting them as best as we can, but doing it efficiently, properly, with accountability. So. Are there any questions? Or where can I, where can I take this conversation before we go to a motion? Is there other questions we want to? Any, anything I need to?
Mark, if I could clarify?
I think it's a great start, but and, you know, it indicates this is a draft. I wouldn't mind flipping it around just a little bit and appointing the subcommittee first. Have them review with some input from both fire departments for the administrative position, at least run it by them. I don't, not now of a long process, since it's just, this is just meant for a part-time thing. But get some input from, you know, the fire departments themselves with the, through the subcommittee, and then bring it back. Maybe the first meeting in December for then an approval then. It would still give you time. We and also, you know, in addition to posting the position, I'd like to figure out a way of how we're going to go about, you know, doing an interview process as well, too. I think this is a great idea for a start, but I'd like to make sure that it's done through a, you know, a posting position, you know, interview process and so forth like that. With some input from the fire departments before we vote on the whether or not to authorize this. That's just my own personal opinion, but I think it's a great start.
Other comments?
Yes, I agree. I think this is putting the cart before the horse. I would like to have the subcommittee appointed, I think, at our, I think. We could come up with some ideas about membership on the subcommittee, as we did with the police subcommittee to create the police, the police commission. And I think we're not going to have a lot of extra money to work with in this budget up, upcoming budget cycle. I think it's going to be pretty much what we've had in the past for budgeting for most of our departments. And I don't, because we vote, because we have the advantage of already having paid for that fire study. I think that this is a short-term subcommittee assignment. And I think we could wrap this up pretty quickly, but I, this is a very extensive job description. You know, a lot of detail there. I've read it through twice, but I'd like to, I'd like to have a little more time. With input from whoever, however, we decide the makeup of the subcommittee should be. And I really think this could be wrapped up by the begin, by end of January, beginning of February. And we could, we could do the job right.
Just the interim position, not the reorganization of the fire departments, right?
Well, an interim position that could last up to 18 months, I think is.
You're just talking about the interim position could be could be wrapped up by January. Okay, I mean, yeah, listen, I, that's fine. And maybe that is the best way to go. I know I got volunteers. But I wanted to put this on the agenda, so kind of I'll shuffle back or forward to the 2E on our agenda, which is. The establishment of the subcommittee. We we talked about it. I've done it casually, but I need to put it on the record and establish a subcommittee to. To, how do I want to put it? Yeah, there's, I guess, the fire department organization subcommittee. And you'll examine how would how would exist now and what future recommendations there might be out there. I know that Kevin was going to be on it. Am I right with that, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Mr. Cunningham, am I right?
That's right.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Salerno, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so that is a subcommittee, can only have up to three. And you folks, this hopefully will be your first. Task. And as you can see, most of the work's been done. I do recommend you reaching out to Bill Ricks. There's some other fine gentlemen and ladies on in our fire department that would could give you some feedback on this position. And it would start peeling back the onion one later time, if you will, about some of the needs, some of the deficiencies we have in our, in our organization. And how we can bring it together. I'm, I'm, I'm very interested in in moving ahead with this, this administrator. As the then the real work will come as you guys go into that fire study. And and then really start talking about what do we need to do? What's the, what's the fire department going to look like 10, 20 years from now? And how do we start putting ourselves in a position to get there? So.
I think this, I think this subcommittee should review this proposal for the fire administrator. And I think the subcommittee should include somebody from not just the three select people, but I think it should include. Two representatives from the fire departments. That's my my input.
Mark, I was going to say something very similar. You know, I think one of the benefits of the Public Safety Building Vision Committee is that we did. Have representation from from the chief, the fire marshal at the beginning, and. I think it will help, especially when they get to the the second and the larger task of coming up with a long-range plan. After the administrator is taken care of and to come up with what what we want to, you know, what the the fire departments want to look like and function like in the future. I think input from the fire departments, both both fire departments would be very valuable. Not so sure, I, if you need, you know, someone now to make the administrative decision coming through the the job description. But certainly moving forward to the long-range plan for the fire departments, I think representatives from the, from both firehouses would be very valuable.
Let me reach out to the two chiefs and ask if they wish to be on it, or they want to recommend someone to be on the subcommittee.
I have a, I have a. Motion, I I change it around a little bit from what Sandy said, that I think would take care of that. If you'd like to, I can put it out if you'd like to hear it.
I don't know. Sure. I don't think I can stop you.
Okay, I'll move to create a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of reviewing the current fire department organization. The committee will include from the Board of Selectmen, Mark Salerno, Dan Cunningham, and Kevin Serry. Additionally, there'll be one member from the Niantic and one member from the Flanders Fire Department appointed by said department. So then it could leave it up to the departments to decide who they want to send.
I almost don't, that's a motion. I would just maybe ask that you leave the, the. The fire representation open. We may want to put a volunteer and a paid. I'm just thinking, you you might want to hear, especially on the subcommittee, of someone who's a career firefighter, and also maybe someone who's on the volunteer corps.
Okay, what I could do that is.
Okay, what I could do that is amend that, I'll amend that to, you know, here again, once we form the subcommittee, then we can talk to the fire departments and see what they'd like to do and they can come back, we can add to the committee at that, subcommittee at that point in time.
Okay.
Okay, I'll amend it to, you know, to provide recommendations from the Board of Selectmen, Mark Salerno, Dan Cunningham and Kevin Siri and will consult with the fire departments regarding their participation.
Second, Daniel Daigle.
Okay. Any further comment? Always willing to work with others. And I think we'll, we'll have a good, I think we'll have a good product as a result of this. Thank you for your input. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, folks get to work on that, as soon as you're done with the fishing dock leases. Get to work on that. And that's coming up at the next meeting, folks, it's in two weeks. We need to probably get you guys motivated to come up with some recommendations on the fishing dock leases. So thank you all. So we've kind of tackled the, both D and E with that, with that motion as we will move on from that position for now. Communications, I don't think they're already so ex officio reports. Mr. Daigle, I know you're a busy guy.
The building committee meeting for the Public Safety Building Renovation Project was held up, I think it was last week, maybe it was the beginning of this week, I'm sorry. The, the building commission did approve and appoint Bill Cornelius as the clerk of the works to represent the building committee during the execution of the project. The prime contractor Noble is finishing up a few of his buyouts with his subcontractors. And they are setting up a kickoff meeting for next week. I saw the email today, I don't know the exact date, but that should be happening next week. And shortly after that, the actual, I'll say in earnest, activities will start taking place in the building itself. So it's moving in the right direction. Noble thinks he can finish it in less than the three hundred and sixty-five days that he quoted in his quote. So that's good to hear and we'll, we'll get them started and move forward. That's all that came from that meeting and I didn't have any other meetings for the other committees since our last meeting. One question I'll put on the table, Mark, and I'm not sure, how do we stand with the awarding of the communication projects for the building of, is that still progressing?
I should have asked Chief when he was here, I'm sorry.
Anna knows if it's made it up to, to a purchase order yet.
I, I, is Anna still here? And she would have ducked out too. So I don't know where it is in the, in the pipeline. But it's, you know, inevitable that it will start moving along as the project starts moving along. We might have to, you know, kick it a little bit down the road, but we'll, let's make sure it's getting done. I think with the clerk of the works on board, we will have some daily contact on that too.
That's all I had for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno.
I don't have anything right now, but I'll be in touch with Dan and Paul to schedule a subcommittee for the fishing dock leases.
Please do. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Well, it's time to push your cup eight, I think with the dock leases, so we will.
You couldn't resist that.
I could, no, I, I've been but I don't have any ex officio report. Unfortunately, I did miss the Historic Properties Commission last night, but as we know, we're making great progress with that, with that grant, so that's encouraging and happy to see that. For me.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Mrs. Mrs. Hardy.
I'm all set.
Okay, and Mr. Siri.
Yeah, just something really quick that's not really an ex officio, but I think, Mark, you may have been copied on this too. I know Gary Geisler was from Bruce Cohen about the East Line Giving Garden. There's a group of farmers up in the north end of town that have acquired a four-acre piece of land on Church Street, right across from the Flanders Baptist Church. And the whole purpose of this is to develop it. And the sole purpose is to donate thousands of pounds of food to those unable to afford food, you know, that needs, and actually, and also to provide sustainability, grown produce to those in need and engage the community and provide education on sound growing practices. So they're looking at making this as a teaching thing. I talked to Bruce yesterday and at some point in the future, once they get a little bit more, going a little bit more, they'd like to come and make a presentation. One thing they're already doing is they're trying to raise funds, they're going on to their, they're trying to get 501(c) status. They're already trying to raise funds and they're already reaching out, trying to find matching grants. He said he wondered if that would be a problem, I said, no, we'd love to hear that. So the great idea. And he'd like to come before us, probably after the first year, once they get going a little bit more, that's it.
Terrific. Great. This is, for the first electance report, I, I, Hardy, congratulations to all the candidates who ran for office, the local candidates. You know, you're putting your name up and, and having to wage a campaign in this world, this climate is, is tougher and tougher. And I, my sincerest congratulations to everyone who stepped up and said, I want to serve my fellow citizens. It looks like incumbents around the area, at least around this area, were successful in their bids to be reelected in many, many contests around the area. Our, our state senator and our state representative, of course, Holly and Paul, Paul and Holly will be going back to Hartford. You know, Mrs. Hardy reminded me that this is the last meeting before Veterans Day and Veterans Day will take a different twist this year because again, we've, we have a great celebration on the town green. But you know, with COVID, it has to be downsized, so there's not, you know, it will, we will acknowledge formally Veterans Day, but there won't be a formal, public participation like there have been in the years past. And there will be again, I promise. But we should mention some of our, you know, our veterans that we're so proud of and that have served our town and represented our town and, and have represented our country. Veterans Representative Brian Burridge serves our veterans, all our veterans very well. As he is on a daily basis, reaching out to veterans in our town and helping them connect the dots. Most of the time it's a veterans VA benefits, but it could also be the social element, the, the isolation that comes with maybe being alone and trying to get the veteran out of this house and into a social atmosphere. It makes a difference, as we all know. We have a celebrated living veteran in our town, Harry Danos. He was on Iwo Jima, we know his story, we've met him. He's a great man, I believe he, he's the chief architect of our, our town hall. I, I don't, I don't think that's urban legend, I think that's fact. And he's, he's, he's a great guy. Veterans who have recently passed away this year, we want to remember them for the good men that they were. Floyd Welch, Pearl Harbor veteran, and Eric Kozniewski, who was in Vietnam, but also a beloved retired police, police officer in the town of East Lime. And he, he, like many others, paved the way for what we witnessed tonight with that professionalism in our police force tonight. So Floyd and Eric will, will miss you. A member of our Board of Selectmen, Kevin Siri, you're a veteran, sir, we should acknowledge that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for serving and, and your son as well, I know he, and your father, I think before, before you, right?
Yes, we go back, I can trace it back to my maternal grandfather was doughboy in World War One, so.
I don't know what that is.
Oh, well, it means he, he went over, doughboy means he was AEF, American Expeditionary Force overseas in World War One.
I mean, the pillbury doughboy comes to mind, I just
Kind of looked like that in his later years, but
We're all getting there. Post Commander VFW of Patrick Hughes, he serves our, our veterans well over at the VFW. And we think the post commander of the American Legion is Tim Yuhas. We were chasing around whether it was still Tim or not, he's, he's been the, the post commander over there for many, many years. He might, is he, is he, do you think he still is, Kevin?
I'm not sure, I know he's still very involved over there.
Or was it, did Maggie take over or?
Maggie's the auxiliary, which is the
That's right, that's right. And, and so many people serve our, serve our veterans, our veterans in our town and have served our country and we thank them all. And we will remember their service for those who are still with us, we'll celebrate and thank them for their service. This coming, I believe it's, I think, I think it's Wednesday next week is Veterans Day. So in your, in your small part of the world, in your small part of your, in your head somewhere on that day, do, do send a prayer and good thoughts to the veterans that have made this country what it is. And the veterans will not be selling poppies this year. That's a big moneymaker for them, the, those little red flowers in front of Stop and Shop or downtown. They chose not to because of COVID and, and interaction with people, they want people to feel safe. So they, they're passing on it for a year. And of course, you know, all the, the great breakfasts that we like to go down to the American Legion and chow down. And sometimes the, the Saturday night roast beef dinners over at the VFW, those have been suspended for so long. I know there's a spaghetti dinner coming up. Kevin, do you remember when that is?
Yeah, it's the seventh, it's this Saturday, I'm not, I think it's four to seven at the Legion Home on York Street. But I don't know if rolling back to the two point one will have any impact on that.
That's, that's a good point, it might be some curbside, you might be able to pick up a couple dinners and, and eat a cheap spaghetti dinner, but also support the veterans group. So I throw that out to them and, and at the at the risk of making this meeting any longer, I don't think I have anything else to deliver to you folks. Does anyone have any questions for me? And if not, we can kind of move along then. Is there public comment tonight from anybody from the public? And if there is, what you're going to do is unmute yourself by hitting star six if you're on a phone or just mute your box and start yelling and screaming and or raising your electronic hand as a button on your, on your box to make yourself known. And if not, I'm giving you some time as I ramble on. Okay, I think I've given you enough time. If not, I can take a motion to adjourn, I suppose.
This is Kevin Siri, I'll move to adjourn the November fourth regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen at eight fifty-nine PM.
Got under the wire. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Aye.
Have a good night, thank you for your service to the town and I wish you all well, stay safe.
Thank you, Mark.